Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I am Doug Fleagle, the Chair of the Program and Personnel Committee, and I want to call the Program and Personnel Committee meeting to order here on Monday, May 12th at 5:32 PM. Will you join me, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to now review the agenda items for discussion at this afternoon's meeting. The first one is employment of employees. Then we will discuss the Intergovernmental Agreement for Hearing Itinerant, District 120, Intergovernmental Agreement for Physical Therapists, District 70 and District 120, Agreement with Rise Aquatics Club, Educational Tour Requests, and Consolidated District Plan for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Our next item on the agenda is an invitation for public comment. And, thank you. I want to remind our attendees that we will accept public comment related to current agenda topics or other items, and you'll be limited to three minutes. You may not secede to another individual. Anyone wishing to speak, we have this signup sheet provided here, and we will listen but not respond. You are asked to come forward to the podium to provide your comments in order of the names listed on the signup sheet. And I have two individuals here. And the first individual I would like to invite to the podium, and that is Mr. Nate Blackman. Nate?
We good? All right. Good evening. My name is Nate Blackmer. I have three children. My oldest graduated from Vernon Hills High School last year. I have a sophomore currently at Vernon Hills High School. And I wanted to speak just briefly about the Rise contract that you're going to be reviewing with Rise Aquatic. Will is a swimmer, and I wanted to first start by thanking the board. I think that, as you have all kind of come to realize, while Vernon Hills High School is relatively new, 25 years after its construction, that aquatic facility is in need of some updating. And I am grateful for the approvals that you've already made to get some of those updates taken care of. I also know that a pool is among the most expensive facilities that a school district operates, and so appreciate the commitment to that. I also wanted to just put in my two cents. Up until a few years ago, Rise Aquatics had access to both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. I don't know all of the details for how that changed or why that changed. One of the explanations that was provided was that as the Park District was renovating their pool, they needed a pool for their swim program. And Vernon Hills High School was able to offer that, which is great. I know that Libertyville, or, I'm sorry, the Park District has completed that renovation and has their pool back open. Certainly, there are a lot of swimmers that have benefited from both facilities here in Libertyville and in Vernon Hills. My hope is that Rise Aquatics would be able to get back to using Vernon Hills High School's pool, if at all possible. It's a very strong feeder program for the Vernon Hills High School swim team that did exceptionally well this year. We're quite proud of those guys. They ended up finishing eighth in the state, and had a good number of all-state swimmers on that team, all of whom, except for one, if I'm not mistaken, came from the Rise program. So I know in the grand scheme of things, it's a fairly small ask, but I just wanted to throw my support behind that. If at all possible, it'd be great to get our guys back in their home pool. The other component to that that I wanted to just mention is I know that that program, Rise Aquatics, has donated a considerable number of just items that a pool needs. They've done a lot for Libertyville High School since they've been here, especially after the construction. I'd love to see Vernon Hills benefiting from some of those same donations. I'm fairly confident that that's the kind of thing that Rise would like to continue to be able to offer. So, thank you so much for your time and consideration. I'll step back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman. We certainly appreciate your comments this evening. The next individual I'd like to invite to the podium, Mr. Jack Jansen.
Hello. My name is Jack Jansen. I'm a freshman swimmer for VHS. I want to start off by thanking all of you for this opportunity to speak here and thanking you for everything you do for the students in District 128. I wanted to say a few words about the Rise Aquatics contract for use of District 128 facilities. So, I started in Rise, which used to be known as CATS, in 2018. At the time, we'd been practicing in Vernon Hills and Libertyville until 2021. That fall, Rise was limited to LHS only. Many of my teammates and I had been hoping we'd go back to the original arrangement, to swim in both pools. And yes, it would be a great benefit for Rise. I want to talk about the way it affects our high school program. So, as you probably know, the VHS swim team has had a great couple of years winning conference for the first time last year and again this year. We train hard, but we also lack the support that our counterparts at LHS benefit from. Without a Rise partnership at VHS, we struggle with aging and failing equipment. Just this last fall, Rise Aquatics purchased a completely new Colorado timing system for LHS. And at VHS, our old timing system is regularly failing during home meets. Secondly, I want to address the fact that less and less trained swimmers have been coming in in recent years. There can be many reasons for this, but the fact that Rise has had to turn away over 100 swimmers in the past few years due to a lack of space seems to be a pretty big reason. Both schools' aquatic programs will suffer from this because, without trained athletes coming in, girls and boys swimming cannot achieve at the highest level. Lastly, I would like to mention that the Park District already has a brand-new pool at Lakeview Fitness Center, which is perfect for the size club they are. Rise is a much bigger program, but it also provides a supportive partnership for D-128 swimmers. I think we need that partnership back at Vernon Hills High School. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen, for your comments. We certainly appreciate those this evening as well. Those two names are the only that we have on the list. So, at this time, I would like to conclude the public comment segment and move forward into our agenda. Our next item on the agenda for discussion, the first subheading is employment of employees, and these are employment items that occurred since last month. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No.
No questions? Okay. Do we take a vote, Carol, or no vote?
Discussion.
Okay. Discussion. Okay. Then we will move forward with the Intergovernmental Agreement for Hearing Itinerant, District 120, a state agenda item. And Bryant, would you be kind enough to provide some additional information on this topic?
Absolutely. So, we, District 128 and District 120 last year came into an agreement, intergovernmental agreement with each other to share services on a hearing itinerant. It was a one-year agreement due to determining the needs for each school. So, it'll be an agreement that we will bring each year. And so, we are bringing this agreement for next year. So, this year, the agreement was that District 120 was at 60%, and we were at 40%. And next school year, due to the needs of our students, it'll be 50%, 50%. So, both schools are agreeable to this, and it worked very well this year. So, bringing that, and that'll go as an action item at the board meeting.
Any questions or comments for Bryant? Okay. No further discussion there. We will move forward with the Intergovernmental Agreement for Physical Therapists, District 70 and District 120, state agenda item. And again, I'm going to ask Bryant to provide information on this matter.
This is same agreement as we have this year with District 70 and District 120 for our physical therapists, and it'll be the same amount for our students for next year. And again, it was a one-year agreement for, intergovernmental agreement for this year. It'll be a one-year for next year.
Any questions or comments regarding this matter? If not, we will move ahead to the agreement with Rise Aquatics Club. This is a state agenda item, and Bryant will provide information on this as well.
So, we do have a history of working with Rise Aquatics for pool space. And this agreement is a yearly agreement. And you could see that we have the cost, annual usage fee for the pool, meet event fee, so when they run meets at our pool. And again, Rise Aquatics is really based out of Libertyville High School now. The change over the years was that Vernon Hills Park District and the Turtle program has expanded into providing elite level or teams for high school level. And we work with Vernon Hills Park District on sharing some of our spaces. So, we use some of their spaces for tennis, for cross-country. We use the Sullivan Center for Special Olympics. So, District 128 has an intergovernmental agreement with Vernon Hills Park District to use some of their facilities. They also have been use of some of our facilities for some of their community education programs, which also include their Turtles program. So, as you can see from the agreement, it lays out all the specifics of time, of the use of the pool, mainly again at Libertyville High School.
Okay. Any questions or comments that anyone wishes to offer regarding the agreement with Rise Aquatics Club?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, specifically regarding Section D4 of the agreement, so Section D, item, or Section 4, Item D.
Mm-hmm.
My question is, why does the Vernon Hills Park District have priority over district-sponsored and feeder programs? The priority list seems to favor the Vernon Hills Park District, which benefits only a portion of the D-128 community rather than the entire D-128 community?
So, one of the things that, part of the reason is that the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Vernon Hills Park District to be able to use some of their facilities for our high school programs, whether it's cross-country and tennis and Sullivan Center, is that we do try to give them some priority for some of the classroom space for their community programs and then also for their swimming programs. Some of our feeder programs, you know, some of the feeder programs that we have are, some of our basketball feeder programs, wrestling feeder here at Libertyville, basketball at both buildings. And so, that's the way, when we worked with both athletic departments, that we felt we needed, and the administration at the time and the board, to prioritize the use of the Park District prior to some of our feeder programs.
Okay. Do we know how many, because it did say in the agreement that the Rise program is designated as a feeder, the feeder program? So, is the Turtles program also designated a feeder program?
Turtles program is part of the Vernon Hills Park District.
Right. But not specifically a feeder program like Rise?
Well, we still consider looking at as a feeder program because that's our students, you know, that live in Vernon Hills, that are in that program, that hopefully then will come to Vernon Hills High School. You know, Rise Aquatics is a combination of Libertyville and Vernon Hills students, but even then, their whole roster is not all Libertyville and Vernon Hills students. So, there are students that are outside the district on the Rise program that are, you know, in their program.
All right. And then, this is a question that you probably won't be able to answer right now, and that's fine. But do we know how many athletes that, you know, move on to swim from Turtles versus Rise? See which is the?
We probably don't have that exact data. We have asked for rosters. And I know we just, John Woods recently asked for the update on the rosters of the number of swimmers that are in the Rise program that are District 128 swimmers.
Okay. And then, this is just kind of a housekeeping question. Since this agreement pertains to first facility use, I'm just curious why this agreement's on the PNP agenda and not on the FNF?
Because we look at more than just the facility use, but it's also programmatic use of, I think, I oversee, you know, both rental programs in our district and also athletics. And so, when we look at programmatic, it's more than just about the facilities that they're using, but it's also about setting up the programs to, you know, help, you know, with our high school athletics.
Okay. Thanks.
So, you feel comfortable with the responses on your questions, Wes? Is there anything else you would like? For example, the, how many athletes for Turtle and Rise that administration may be able to come back with?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Bryant, would you be kind enough to do that for us?
Yeah, I can work with John Woods and Brian McDonald on getting some more information.
And again, that would be the breakdown of athletes coming out of the Turtles versus the Rise program. Anything else? Are there any other questions or comments regarding this topic? Okay. If not, we'll move ahead to educational tour requests. There are two education tours listed. And Tom, will you be kind enough to provide background information there?
Yes, absolutely. As many of our board members are new, education tours are anything that is over 200 miles or requires an overnight stay. So, it wouldn't be like a field trip for us. We would consider it an educational tour. These are both athletic trips. One, the LHS girls' basketball team going to a team camp at Purdue University this summer. The other, Vernon Hills girls' basketball team going to a team camp at the University of Wisconsin. We administratively have reviewed this. All of the necessary forms, insurance, and kind of requirements for the coaches to submit are in order. So, we want you as a board to just be aware of these. You have the ability to review and approve ed tours. So, we typically talk about them at our committee meetings, and then you would move to vote on those and approve those at board meetings.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this topic? Okay. If not, last agenda item is the 2025-2026 Consolidated District Plan, state agenda item. And Tom is going to be kind enough to offer additional background information on this subject.
Yes. There are many exciting things about my job. This is not one of them. This is pretty mundane. This is the Illinois Consolidated District Plan. So, what it is, it's actually a good thing. It is, in the state of Illinois, school districts, when we get a lot of grants. And those grants specifically are like our Title Grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title V for us, as well as our IDEA Grant, which is a big grant for special education services. And so, instead of those grants all being spread out and done kind of piecemeal, what the Consolidated District Plan does is it asks us as a school district to take all of those grants and consolidate, one, what is our plan for using the funds that are available in those different grants to meet our district and student needs? So, we are in the process of putting that together. Then what happens is you as a board will review our Consolidated District Plan and gives you an opportunity to ask questions or to make any recommendations. Ultimately, you would need to approve it, so that, once it's approved, then we can apply for our Title I, Title II IDEA Grants. So, we, one provision of the CDP, the Consolidated District Plan, is that if a district is not making major changes to its approaches, it can submit virtually the same grant the following year. We are not making major changes to our school improvement efforts for next year. We'll have some iterative changes, but we are not taking on new initiatives or using the money to tackle a new kind of program or approach. So, I attached last year's CDP for you to review. You will get a copy of the updated 25-26 CDP in the next week. It'll look very similar to last year's. And then, at our board meeting in the end of May is when you would vote to approve the CDP for our district.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. This did appear to be one of the more heavier topics on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments that wish to be shared at this time? Okay. If not, that concludes the items that were listed on our agenda. Future agenda items, the items listed here will be on the May Board Agenda and next month's Program and Personnel Committee Agenda. Does anyone have any additional items to add? Okay. If not, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 5:54 PM here on Monday, May 12th. And thank you all for your participation.
Yes, thank you, Doug.
No, it's listed at 5:45 as a start time, so we can roll. Thank you.
All right. Is everyone ready? We all good? Okay. All right. Good evening. I call the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting to order at 5:55 PM. Going to begin with reviewing the agenda items. We will start with public comments, moving on for discussion. Items for discussion this evening are Annual Lake County Indemnification Agreement, the Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Transfer of Interest from Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund, Resolution Authorizing Transfer from Education Fund into the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and the FY26 Treasurers Bond. And then, we will ask for future agenda items, and then we will adjourn. So, first things first. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to give a public comment? Okay. Moving on. We will start with our items for discussion, the Annual Lake County Indemnification Agreement. And Mr. Stanley, would you please provide us with information?
Yeah. All four of these things are regular things that we do basically once a year. So, this first one is an agreement with the Lake County, the municipality. And what it basically says is, the county will agree to withhold permits from developers in unincorporated areas unless we tell them we're good to go in terms of developer donations. In exchange for holding up those permits, the county says, "But if we get sued because of it, you have to defend us," which is a reasonable request. So, this is an annual agreement we do. We have never been in this situation before. But I think the idea is, you know, if you ever are in this situation, like there are some big developments happening in our county and other places, and so, this would help us be able to negotiate with developers if needed. So, just an annual thing that we approve every year.
All right. Our next item, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Transfer of Interest from the Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund.
Yep. This is, so, in school district, I'm not sure how much familiarity you all have with school finance, but in education, there, we have eight different funds, education, O&amp;M, debt service, transportation, and there's a few others. To move money from one fund to another has a lot of legal rules. It's not like a bank account where you can just transfer money from a bank account. You have to have very specific reasons why you can move money from one fund to another. And in particular, there are some funds that are very, very difficult to get money out. That's debt service and working cash. The only way you can get money out of working cash is you have to abate it or abolish it, and you do a resolution, and then you can transfer money. Debt service, the only way you can get money out of there, if you have a balance, is to issue debts and pay off the debt with that proceeds. So, it's a little tricky. So, what the law allows is, if you have money in that account and you earn interest through the year, as long as you transfer that interest out by the end of the year, by a proper board resolution, it no longer, you can do that easily. But if you wait till the end of the year or after the end of the year, it becomes now a permanent balance of that account, and now you can, you're much more restricted in being able to move that money out. So, we used to do debt service and working cash every year. We have no debt service balance anymore, and so, we don't do that one. If we ever did, we would. But the working cash is still a fund that generates revenue. And so, we look at an annual basis to transfer the revenue. So, this is to transfer the interest that we've earned so far this year, plus whatever we earn in May and June.
All right. Next item, Resolution Authorizing Transfer from Education Fund into the Operations and Maintenance Fund.
This is, this one's not quite an annual thing. This is as needed. But again, to move money, so we're paying for the cafeteria, if you've seen that renovation happening. We're paying that with our own money, our own fund balances. A bulk of that fund balance is in the ed fund. And so, in order to pay for it out of the Capital Projects, Capital Projects is its own fund, we have to first transfer it into the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and then it'll get auto-transferred at the end of the fiscal year into Capital Projects. And so, there's a law that says you can transfer freely between ed fund, O&amp;M, and transportation, for whatever reason you want, as long as you have a hearing. And so, we have a hearing scheduled for next Monday that you have to give proper public notice for. That notice was given on this last Friday with the right timeline. And so, this is basically us now actually moving the cash to pay for the part of the cafeteria project that we've done so far. And we'll have to do more next year, but this is our first kind of step towards that. So, this is transferring 8 million from our ed fund into O&amp;M, and it'll get auto-moved over into Capital Projects as it incurs the expenditures by the fiscal year end.
And our last item, the FY26 Treasurers Bond.
It's my pleasure to serve as your treasurer. By law, you have to have your treasurer bonded. And so, the law changed last year, and so, the bonding has to be 10, the bond amount has to be 10% of whatever monies you have as of June 30th of your most recent fiscal year. Well, our most recent fiscal year was June 30th of 2024. So, we go back and look at those financial statements, and how much money did we have? We had 100 million, 27,000, or 100 million, 270,000. So, that means your bond amount needs to be at least 10 million, 27,000. Our bond last year was 10 million, which was fine for that year, but for this coming year, we have to make sure it's at least higher. So, I just had it round up to 11 million. So, it looks a little funky. There's kind of two documents, but really, our bonding is going to be for 11 million, which will cover us for the proper bonding.
All right. Dan, I just want to thank you for the descriptions that you put under the public comment. Those were helpful. So, thank you for explaining everything. And then, for the new board members, the essentials of Illinois school finance. Items B, C, and D are all covered in depth in the book. So, if you want more information, it was really helpful.
Those are great resources. Also happy to answer any questions you have too, so.
All right. Future agenda items. The items listed will be on the May Board Agenda. Do I need to list them out? Okay.
No.
All right. And next month's Facilities and Finance Agenda. Does anyone have any items to add? All right. Then I adjourn the meeting at 6:02 PM. All right, then I adjourn the meeting at 6:02 PM. All right.
So I call, I call the special board meeting to order at 6:02 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Nina Austin.
Here.
Jim Batson. Raul Deschmok.
Here.
Doug Fleagle.
Here.
Lisa Hessel. Middleish Cotwell.
Here.
Wes Poland.
Here.
Okay. We open the invitation for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda items. First on the list is, for action, is the agenda item for additional asbestos bid for the LHS Cafeteria Project. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Poland, so moved.
Fleagle, second.
Wait, what was this?
Any discussion?
Do you want to provide some info for you?
Can I, can I, just the motion, did you, did you read the whole thing?
I did not, actually.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the additional asbestos work for the LHS Cafeteria Project to Nationwide Environmental and Demo LLC in the amount of 60,500?
Poland, so moved.
Fleagle, second.
Any questions?
I'd like to just, for the record, hear the description. I know you provided some information that's in the public content, but if you could just give a, just a brief summary, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so with any project, there are going to be changes that happen based on unknown conditions or variety of other things. Sometimes those changes can be handled under the bids that are there, but there is a state law that says any, any changes over 10% of a particular bid have to be rebid. And so as we went through the tour, was that last month? Of the cafeteria, Mark noticed a few things. And as they were doing the demo, they discovered more asbestos work that had to be done. And so unfortunately, it was substantial. And so we had to bid out the additional work and put in another contingency in there to help any more that might come. Hopefully there isn't. If there's more, Mark might have an aneurysm in this project. So, so we bid it out.
Mark, please, please don't.
Yeah, yeah. And yeah, so that, that's, that's what's going on with this. This is work that we absolutely have to do. We have to abate this before we can really move forward.
Historically, have we had problems with asbestos? Or is this the first project that we've encountered this significance?
This building has a long history with asbestos abatement. And so we've been working over the many years to abate it as we can and as we get into the spaces. But there's still significant, I don't know if you want to add more to that?
We have, still have asbestos present in the building. As part of the asbestos program with the state, we have a six-month inspection every six months. Our consultant comes around, checks all the building. We have books and books and books of, you know, what originally was here, what's been taken care of, you know, and what's left. So they, six-month inspection, checks, you know, see if there's any damage or anything that happened. So that's every six months, and then every three years we do a, have to do an annual report with the state. So, and every year we try to do some asbestos removal, and it's usually because of a project that we're doing.
And one other follow-up question, given that history, do you find it concerning that the contractor came up short on their removal? Or is this just circumstantial in your opinion?
It's circumstantial for the conditions. We did not see the materials. So we had contingency in the original mount, and we used that contingency up. So that's, Dan said we were over our 10% that we could do a change order from an estimate we got. So then we, we bid, we bid the work to get it done.
So, sorry, no, go ahead.
And we added another contingency in just in case something else arises. For instance, in the kitchen, plaster ceiling was up there, and you couldn't see above it. And when we took it down, we assumed it would be some pipe bubbles. There actually was a whole duct that was full covered. The rest of it had been abated years ago out in the hallway, but we didn't know that it was above the ceiling in the kitchen. So, you know, that was one thing that we came across. So there's pipes and pipe chases that are in black walls, and you open up the wall and there it is. You can't see it, so, you know.
As with many buildings that are this age, and even Vernon Hills, having drawings that are exactly accurate don't exist. And so they're, they have their best sense of what is behind the wall. But, and they'll do some testing, but until you knock that wall down, you don't really know what's behind there. And once, once it's there, you have to address it. So that's really what's happening with this one. It wasn't that there was known asbestos work, we didn't, they didn't bid enough. It was more asbestos work was discovered than what was anticipated.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I only have a comment. One of the things that you have been doing over the last couple of years that I've really appreciated is including photos when you're bidding out projects and having us take action. It is completely fine that there's no photos included in this particular item, but I would like to encourage you to continue to add photos of the areas that we're spending money on. I think it's helpful for us, especially for those of us that don't spend a lot of time in the building, so we can immediately picture the area of work. But I also think it's great for the public because they might not know the areas that we're discussing. So if you could just keep in mind in the future to continue to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I will, I will do that. There hasn't been really anything because of the asbestos, additional asbestos that we've encountered and then, then this, you know, that we haven't done additional work since the walk. Anything significant, but yes, we'll include pictures. And then we have all our summer projects coming up, so we'll include pictures for that.
Are we all good? Can we have a vote, please?
Sure. Oh, Deschmok? Oh, sorry, you okay?
Yes, yes.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
My bad.
Fleagle?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Cotwell?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Oh.
He's got water.
Are you okay?
I'm just, I'm getting coughed for, that's why I'm not talking today.
We are going to move to the next agenda item. Can we have a motion and a second to approve the bid recommendations for the helicule piers and push piles as presented?
Poland, so moved.
Hessel, second.
Then for the new board members?
Yeah, so part of the cafeteria project is we're encapsulating the courtyard and putting a ceiling above that. Part of that is, it's your building, building, and so you need a foundation. And so the footing, footings that were originally designed, once they started digging in, again, unforeseen, once you get in there, they got down, the soil was not suitable for what they had. And so they had to re-engineer a different idea for the footings. And their solution is what was in front of us, the helicular piers. Most time redesigns don't end up costing less, so this one was more. And there's a lot more that, that's added in terms of more footings and stuff so that it's, it's very secure. One note on here that is a little tricky, which is why we worded the motion that way, is there were three bid packages, O2B, O3B, and 31A. Part of that work is to approve the bid, O2B to Gilco, as you can see, for 93-207, 31A to Safeguard for 153-536, but we need to reject the O3B bid. The price came in way too high, and Gilbein and the rest of the team are working on an alternative solution. We don't believe that is a worthy bid to accept.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Sure. Fleagle?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Cotwell?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Deschmok?
Okay. So may I have a motion and second to convene in closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C2 and employment of employees, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C1?
Hessel, so moved.
Poland, second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Hessel?
Aye.
Cotwell?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Deschmok?
Aye.
Fleagle?
Aye.
And so there will be no action taken following the closed session.